Oh, well, I think we might as well call the meeting to order.
There's a knocking for it.
Yes. Hello, everyone. Welcome to our planning board meeting of July 9th, 2019. I wanted to note, as you can see, that the meeting is being recorded. And you may also record yourself, so as you to disrupt our meeting. But I think we're probably amply covered. So, tonight, we don't have any scheduled items, you know, any presentations of projects. But we have quite a lot of content that we do want to go over, which is related to two things. First of all, our ongoing housing initiatives discussion. So, we will recap the work that we've done to date on accessory dwelling units and two families, and just ensure that we've kind of got a sense of the board in terms of where we stand. And then, we will move into a discussion of planned residential developments with a focus on the, what I'm terming informally, village PRDs. Basically, those that are close to town centers that would have greater density, perhaps. So, we'll see what the board thinks about that. Because I, and then, the other major topic is, which is, this is sort of one piece of, is our overall goals for 2019 and 2020. What's nice is we've kind of gotten a head start on just this housing topic, but that's not the only thing we're working on. So, we have more to do. So, we'll talk about our overall goals. And then, well, we're going to start off here, though, with some minutes to give some time for one of our members to arrive. And perhaps we'll even do a little bit of liaison reports, too, if we have a little bit more time. So, any discussion of the minutes of May 21st, 2019?
I did not note anything.
Any?
I have too many passwords. Remember this one? Oh, my God, thank you.
Okay, so, can I entertain a motion on the minutes of May 21st?
Um, I, I move that we adopt the minutes as written for May 21st, 2019.
Any second?
My second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Now, the minutes of June 11th, 2019, which are highlighted in yellow.
Yeah, I was wondering why.
Why are they?
Is that because we didn't talk about it last time? We were about to, and then we... Did you, were those the ones you didn't have a chance to read, Matt?
Is that why? Yeah, on all of our sheets.
I don't know why there's a red and yellow.
I don't think it was that way on the one that got emailed around, though. So, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, I assume Nancy had some interest in this. Okay, well, anyway, any comments on those? Everybody okay?
I move that we adopt the minutes as written for June 11th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. So, that was really fast. So, we still don't have Burton. So, why don't we talk about liaison reports? Anybody attend any meetings?
I attend the HATS meeting.
A HATS meeting.
Which stands for Hanscom Area Towns Committee.
Yes.
And, um, there were two things that were relevant to planning board. Well, the scope is very broad. Two relevant things is that, are that they want to have a discussion on housing diversity initiatives in the fall, which is very pertinent to our goals for this year. So that we get an opportunity to check in with adjacent towns and get a clear understanding of what they're up to. And the other thing is that there was just some discussion of regional transportation and traffic issues, and how it relates to the public transportation system. That was specific to the discussion of state reps, Michelle Chiquilo from Lexington, and our rep, Tammy Gueva. So, that was interesting to hear their perspectives.
Oh, they were in attendance?
They were, and they were presenting, kind of like letting everyone know what they have been up to in the short time they've been in office. So, that's it.
Okay.
Who is the update from?
It's, um, Michelle Michelle Secola. Thanks.
Anybody want to get the projector unstuck?
The projector is stuck.
Yeah, it's called, it is stuck. Like, I'm disconnected and it's still...
Wow. I've never seen that. And I don't have an update from the West Concord Advisory Committee because they do not meet in July.
They're returning adult.
I have a related thing to the housing initiatives we're going to talk about.
Okay.
I was visiting my family, and I told them about, you know, we were talking about in-law apartments. This is in Maryland. I said, "Oh, you know, we're working on this." You know, so that people can age in place. And they both almost spit out their food when they heard the term. And I was like, "Well, is this a legitimate term that's being used?" And I guess it is, but like, is this a term that resonates with the population that we're offering this to?
I think it's a term for myself.
Well...
They had such a strong reaction, and I was like, "Oh, maybe I, maybe we made up that term, and it's not really a term that is..."
Maybe you, thanks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it is, because I looked it up since then, but it was not well received by them.
They didn't like the idea...
They just, they were like, it kind of felt like that they were just going to sit there and age.
Wither in place.
Right, but both of their reactions were so strong that it made me think like, "Oh, I hope we're not turning anybody off by like, working towards this initiative that is intended to be..."
Wow.
But I did, I looked it up afterwards, and I mean, there's websites about it and movements about it. I just didn't know if you had received any comments that, "We like the idea, but wish it was presented differently." I had not heard any other reactions like that. Oh, they were... And we were talking about an in-law apartment in their house, and I was like, "Oh, that's crazy. You're doing that, we're working on it."
Wow, okay, well, I mean, that phrase is used liberally in the comprehensive long-range plan.
It is, and so, I'm sure there was plenty of opportunity for feedback, at which point there would have been if people said, "Yeah, I..."
Yeah. I don't know, maybe we're just more static up here. We don't mind aging in place.
I feel more comfortable with that more tightly.
I don't know. But I haven't heard any negative feedback. I also wanted to make a, I wanted to acknowledge, for the sake of transparency, that we have gotten some public feedback, you know, through the email address that we set up. And I think the very first email, you know, which was praising the different goals, since we're talking about in-law apartments, I think it's worth noting that it was from my mother-in-law. So, you know, for the sake of avoiding conflict of interest, though, I mean, someone might ask whether, what the conflict was there. I should note that. So, I guess we should launch forward on the housing initiatives discussion. I think that Burton won't miss all that much. So, I think following the convention of meetings to start with old business and then move in with new business, what I've tried to do here with this one chart, it's a one-page summary chart, was to identify the kind of similarities and differences between accessory dwelling units and two-family houses, because each of them is more than one unit on a property, but they do have different characteristics. And I thought, as well, last meeting, there was a certain amount of doubt, you know, just about, what are we trying to achieve with two families? And I just wondered if we reviewed this, if people felt, first of all, that was this what we had decided? And then, secondly, is, I think there was some question of whether we wanted to pursue the two-family alternative in addition to the accessory dwelling units, which I got a sense that everybody did want to pursue. So, in terms of permitted locations, the idea was that we would restrict two families to narrower area, just within a half-mile to village centers, or maybe residency, that unlike the occupancy requirements of an accessory dwelling unit that require it to be owner-occupied, there would be no restrictions on a two-family. You could be an absentee owner, rent one unit, rent both units, whatever. And then, you, for accessory dwellings, you could rent out a unit, but you couldn't sell it. But you could condoize a two-family, if you wanted to, and sell off units. And then, the other thing, though, is that where two families are more restricted is that an accessory dwelling unit could be in a detached structure as long as it meets the other special permit requirements that we have. But a two-family would have to be part of the same structure. So, it would just be one building. The dimensional requirements are the same for both. The idea was we would maintain the same dimensional requirements as we have for single-family houses. The minimum unit size would be the same, which is something we're still investigating, why we have this particular minimum unit size. It seems reasonable, I mean, 350 square feet doesn't seem like it would cramp anyone's style, so to speak. Then, the maximum unit size, there is a maximum of, we were suggesting 750 square feet, or maybe even 720, depending upon Nathan or my sister, you know, for by right, and then maybe 1,000 square feet by special permit. But for the two-family, there really wouldn't be any restricted size, except for whatever the rest of the bylaw says. If you have a floor area ratio limitation, that would, you know, limit it. Then, the number of bedrooms or rooms were not proposed. We're assuming that the unit size will sort of create its own restrictions, a number of rooms or bedrooms for the accessory dwelling units. Maximum unit occupancy, same story. Then, special permit requirements. Basically, I think where we came down was that for accessory dwellings, it'd be fine on conforming lot by right, but you'd have to do a special permit for a detached structure that doesn't meet the setbacks of the primary structure. And if you had a non-conforming lot where you're reconstructing and going over, where you'd have to get a special permit anyway, where you'd have growing over 50% growth. For the two families, people wanted to be more cautious and have a special permit in all cases. And then, parking requirements, no special parking requirements in either, and no sewer hookup requirements for accessory dwellings, we assume. But we need to talk with Public Works about those requirements for a two-family. So, any comments on this summary? Does this sound like where we landed last time?
Such a great summary.
Any, any thoughts about whether we might want to amend any of this, this on further consideration, seeing it all lined up, side by side? We'll get to public comment. No?
I have a question.
Okay, we'll move, we'll get to public comment in a few minutes, after the board's discussion. So, I actually am still concerned about the special permit being required in all cases. I just feel like that could really be an impediment to this model, and I'm not that convinced that there's a big risk that suddenly we'll have 202 families, you know, in town. I actually am more concerned that we won't have any. You know, that this model, we need to, if we want it to be part of the town, it needs to be viable. And it's just putting an extra barrier ahead of it versus other models, I think will tend to limit its use. So... Now, there are sort of halfway approaches to this. So, for example, you know, if you construct a new one, you might do it by right. If you reconstruct an existing house to, into a two-family, you might need a special permit. But, you know, I don't know if that makes a difference to people.
Why?
Well, I guess it's an established house neighborhood, but, you know, clearly, a teardown is also an established house and neighborhood. So, it doesn't necessarily, I don't know if it is any bigger deal.
Especially since you're limiting it to the half-mile radius. I mean, you're essentially saying it's going to be a teardown or a reconstruction.
It's funny, because I live, you know, near the town in West Concord, and the two units next to ours, they're Victorian houses. They were originally built as two-families. And they could be restored to their original layout. Now, I don't know that that's imminent by any means, but actually, the second one already has multiple units in it. So, that, that one, but it's in the business district and stuff.
No, I'm saying that these are really in the half-mile radius. These two options are really the only option. There's not going to be any potentially new land, new construction.
Greenfield construction, absolutely none. Yeah, right, so, you're right. If there, if it's a new unit, it's because of a teardown.
Yeah.
So, I guess the question I'd have is, should we reconsider that? And if, if that's, you know, otherwise, I think we've kind of got this from our...
That was my thought, is that I didn't want to put any additional barriers, but Burton had some, you know, good points last time that made me reconsider that. But I, my concern is that this is not going to be an attractive enough option to developers. And so, I don't want to make any additional benefits. And if we, this really is our only diversity that we're offering, is, I think we're hoping that we're going to put in slightly smaller two-family homes, or, you know, homes that are slightly smaller, and then accessory dwellings also slightly smaller, that meets a couple of different audiences. I don't think they're going to be, the two families are going to be affordable, but they're going to be less expensive.
Right.
But, I mean, and they're going to be smaller and more diverse. So, but besides these, I don't think we have, and then we've got PRDs, but besides these, we don't have a lot of other diverse offerings, right? So, that's why I think we need to make this more attractive.
Single-family, otherwise.
Right. For people to do. And I think we talked about, there's a lot of ways you could do that, like with the Victorians and things like that.
Yeah.
This may have come up in the last meeting, I wasn't here for it, but the special permit consideration might, in my mind, might make it easier to get it through town meeting.
Well, that is, that is the other way to think about it.
Because they will think, all these, you know, two-families are going to pop up and all this sort of stuff.
And I think that was, the thought was that you could start with this, see how it goes, and then if there weren't any problems, then you...
Yeah, but I think the alternative, that what might actually instead happen is we put this in like this, and nobody built it.
Right, and then you go to try to remove that, and like, well, nobody's doing it anyway.
Yeah. So, I guess, I don't know. I mean, we will get another chance to discuss this. It's just really in terms of drafting language, what do we propose? I mean, it's only a few words in the, you know...
It is, I'm curious to hear more, either public comment, but also more developer comment, or whatever other stakeholders we talk to that can give us more insight into it.
Yeah, it's just what do we put out as our straw proposal?
Right, right. I mean, if you're going to do that, then you might put out special permit. And then, if you get feedbacks as, "Well, if it wasn't a special permit, we would do it."
Okay, well, again, I don't think it's a...
I can't imagine a developer saying, "I want..." To have to go through a special permit process.
And we talked about that it wasn't significant expense, but it is still another, it's a time barrier.
And a risk, that perhaps we wouldn't approve it.
I think just to know, like, from a real estate perspective, like, what they have seen in terms of sales of two-family homes.
Right.
So, I know that there's, talked about this last week, but they tend to sit... I mean, so, it'd be good to get underneath what's really...
Yeah, what's the issue?
What are the market forces?
Okay.
I'd be in favor of lowering the barrier.
Yeah. Burton, just to catch you up, we've just been going through this comparison chart. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, between sort of where we landed last time of the accessory dwelling units and the two families. And the one point of discussion has been around the special permit requirement for the two families, and whether, you know, we should relax that or not, just given that it seems like two families already struggle to be relevant. And so, to, you know, reduce barriers, to try to encourage the possibility of creating one, is something that at least I proposed.
Thanks.
But then, we just had some discussion about, well, would town meeting be more prone to approve if there was a special permit requirement that reduced the perceived risk?
And you had some...
And you had had some doubts last time, yeah.
Yeah, I think I was kind of going back and forth, but oddly, I think I was feeling a little more conservative on that, on that approach last time, thinking that two-family would be something we'd want to have some time, seeing how it unfolded with the special permit. But I appreciate what you're saying, too, that, you know, we don't even know the economics of it.
Right.
So, any barrier?
Well, this is really about what proposal we're going to put out in front of the public, so that then we get public feedback, you know, and then we can adjust further, of course.
So, the other option is to take this, and I can, I can easily get that feedback from different developers and real estate agents.
Love that.
Yes, that would be great.
That would be fantastic. Okay, so, I will, I pause at this point, take some public comment just on this topic. We will have further public comment on the other topics as we pursue them. So, you're the first, yes?
Harlan Reed, 83 Wood San, speaking for myself, and as a layperson, I would feel far more comfortable with this new process if you had a special permit required for two families, for all two families, for two reasons, one of which you have discussed, one you have not. The one you've discussed is the question mark about the requirement for a sewer extension to the second unit. You don't know how that, how the Public Works Commission is going to deal with that. But the second is also dealing with the Concord Municipal Light Plant. They have had, they've come very close to having brownouts because of the imbalance of the electric load. And I would encourage you to consider that as one of the issues, because when you have two units, you have double electricity use in the parcel. So, for those reasons, I would say, you're doing a great job here, but to be cautious, go with a special permit for the two-family. Make it as of right as you have with the accessory units.
Okay, we had a comment over here, a question, a comment?
But I was, it's about accessory dwellings.
That's fine.
Okay, well, all right, so...
So, identify yourself, please, and your dress.
My name's Kathleen Ladd. I'm interested in the building on Hubbard Street.
Okay, you don't currently reside in Concord?
Yes, I do.
What's your address, please?
Address, then?
Well, I'm renting right now at 13 Lexington Road.
Great.
Okay? But my daughter is, I hope my daughter is hoping to, and in-law to me, I think I've already spoken to her. And she has an accessory building that doesn't fit the setback rules. And, and that's going to, that seems to be addressed here in the special permit requirements, detached structures that do not meet primary structure setback requirements.
There would be a special permit required for that, would be the idea.
Would that be more lax than the current one?
More lax than the current one?
You currently cannot have an accessory dwelling in a detached unit
Right.
built after 1929.
Right, it, well, in, on Hubbard Street, most of the units are older than 1929, I would assume, but...
Hers is, hers...
Well, it's the detached unit.
The original burned down, and hers is in 1994.
Oh, okay, well, they are, in that case, currently, you could not have one, but that, under this new proposal, you could with a special permit, potentially. I mean, I don't know all the details, but yes.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
Sue Felton, 19 Sunnyside Lane. I'd like to speak in favor of allowing two-family housing by right in addition to the reasons that have been mentioned before. I'd like, I think that from the standpoint of getting acceptance from people, if you start with special permit, when you introduce it to the public, and then later you say, "Well, maybe we could loosen this to by right," you're going to get people more upset, I think, that you're making it looser than you originally started out with. And if you start by right, and maybe possibly go to special permit if things are looking bad. Second of all, from the standpoint of developers, if it starts out in the discussion as by special permit, they might look at it and say, "That's too difficult, I'm not even going to pay attention to this discussion." Whereas if you start out with by right, they might look at it, and if it later turned into special permit, then they would say, "Hey, we're not going to do this," and that might have more weight than if they had just never checked into the discussion in the first place. I'd actually like to stay by right, but I'm just thinking of this from the standpoint of how to get people to buy into things. Also, it is true that if it starts out as special permit, the town can change it later, but in addition to other things you've already mentioned, that's a lengthy process, and it's a lot of work for town staff and for a few of the members of the planning board. It could easily take five years to change it. That's a lot of time to let go by with more teardowns, getting turned into single-family houses that are then very difficult to retrofit and expensive to retrofit into two-families, if that's what we want. Also, before considering energy use, I'd want to actually look at the statistic of what the energy footprint of one 5,000-square-foot single-family is compared to two 2,500-square-foot attached houses, because it might not actually be all that different. I'm not sure, so anyway, thanks.
Okay. Yes?
Jeff Collins, 25 Highland Street, and also on the West Concord Advisory Committee. But just my own question, generally in support of all this, but have you thought much about implications for parking and addition of heating in the lots?
Well...
After a recent, listening to a recent conversation on this, incidentally, I was in Waltam, in one of the side neighborhoods. A lot of students were grand, I stayed there. A lot of kids, living along with multiple apartments and old houses.
Yeah. So, actually, we did have some discussion about that very phenomenon last time, I think, but we didn't end up coming up with any particular parameters to put into the bylaw. I mean, I think one of the things that is different is that our lot sizes tend to be larger, so the risks are lower relative to, you know, 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size with the two-family on it. Well, there's just not much left, as opposed to a 10,000-square-foot conforming lot. I mean, there are non-conforming lots that are smaller, but that's part of why there would be a special permit. Any other comments from the public?
Oh, just one minor thing, you mentioned half-mile from Village Center. If you did that, wouldn't you run into a uniform zoning problem with the state zoning?
We'd have to create a overlay district.
Okay, come on, either way, then I'll...
Related to the parking thing, though, what we talked about was that that might be covered in the store water by law. There might be something related to that, I think.
Yeah, though, we're not proposing, I know that Elizabeth didn't put that on her list for this year.
A residential store water by law?
Yes, that's the one, one of the two things that I threw...
One of the two things I...
Something had to come up?
No, you can, you can...
No, I'm just saying like...
We can jiggle the, we can change the priorities.
One of the things that we talked about a little bit was that we might be able to handle or mitigate the paving with something else that's being worked on. And it won't necessarily all happen at once, but I think we just got to kind of see with it.
Right, for example, it could be next year. Okay, so, in the meantime, we might have something, you know?
But I, I mean, just speaking to, to his point, there should be some assessment of the consequences of whatever changes we're proposing. And so, I mean, we should understand if it's likely to, you know, result in increased impervious surface in the town.
Yeah.
Or not, or if there's other environmental impacts. We've been talking about the wastewater treatment and stuff and stuff. So, it seems like we should catalog, you know, how we understand the impact.
Oh, as among the considerations or risks, I agree, it should be on the list, yes.
Which, in the comprehensive long-range...
Which in the comprehensive long-range plan, there'll be, there'll be the checklist charts that you'll go through.
That we have to go through, but I think that this is just a good one to note, because it is one of the more prominent ones that's come up.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay, so does that kind of conclude this part of the discussion? I'd like to then.
Just one quick question, so when I, I was thinking about if we went down a two-family by right route, is there any precedent in the bylaw for dictating form in any manner or function? Because one of the things I would worry about is a, a design we've seen recently where you, you do have a connected structure with more than one unit in it, but it's connected by a bank of garage, garages. And I think we'd all be a little disappointed if that was the result of this. But if I were a developer and I wanted to, you know.
Create more of a separation.
Party wall, I would, I would do exactly that. Is there precedent for that, or? Or is?
No, I mean, you, you will have to think about.
Think about that.
Language to address that. And I'm just not sure how you would put that in.
It's really about how you define attached, yeah. It's an attached living dwelling units.
Well, that's currently in the bylaw already about it having, you know, a common, when you have an accessory dwelling unit, there's currently something in there, because for a couple of years, we ended up having the, the house and an accessory dwelling unit connected by a pergola.
Right.
Or there's one where they have, it's a retaining wall and it's completely buried. So that's.
That's a great one.
So that's why that zoning by law amendment.
It's connected, you just can't see it.
Yeah, you just can't see it. So that's a, that's a particular design standard that you would have to.
Right, okay.
And, and it may be something, you know, share, you know, there's going to be some structural term, Alan might know, there's, there's going to be some, there's going to be some construction standard term that deals with when it's living, you know.
Yeah, well, he said like a common party wall or something, you know.
There's going to be some term, I just don't know what it is.
Yeah, okay, well, I think that's a worthy consideration. Okay, so now we're ready to move to new business relative to housing choice, and that's this so-called Village PRD. So I think just to set the stage here, first of all, I think that we've expressed our discontent with some of the PRD proposals we've received, and I think as well have noted the desires of the comprehensive long-range plan relative to, you know, creating unit sizes that are a better fit for the changing demographics of our population. And so what that would mean is not necessarily more building surface per acre, but more units per, perhaps, per acre that are smaller units overall, hopefully. So if you look at our current PRD, it seems to be built around more of a suburban model, it's sort of the alternate, alternative to a suburban subdivision. And so now we're trying to kind of say, okay, well, what would this sort of close-to-transit center, village PRD type of thing look like? And so I tried to summarize, I, I just went through section 10 of the bylaw, looking at each of the criteria that are currently in the bylaw, and then just threw out sort of some of the key questions. So I think just, I think we've discussed that, just like with the two-family, this would be one of those that would be just a half mile from the Village Center kind of criterion, because the ones outside of that, I think that the other goals of the PRD of preserving open space really should hold sway. So, so then we get to, well, all right, it's mostly resident C, and so therefore, all the kind of things about number of parcels per acre and things like that, kind of are built on top of the resident C numbers as opposed to the other districts. So parcel size, currently, you can't do a PRD unless you, in resident C, unless you have an acre lot. So is that okay, people?
Do we have a sense of how many acre lots are in resident C?
But there.
Easily find out.
But, you know, we do, we do A and Rs all the time. What is an acre lot today may not be an acre lot tomorrow and so on.
Still an idea.
Give you a sense.
It does give you a sense of, yeah. I mean, there aren't a lot of them, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
So, you know, this one, we may be doing a lot of work for a dwindling supply of potential parcels.
Yeah, just a quick comment on that, but it seems, you know, when we're looking at this half mile from Village Center, Transit Centers as, as a focus here, I think for historical reasons, those tend to be areas of smaller lot sizes as well.
Yes.
And, and so make, make a lot of sense to tweak that requirement so that, and, and I would say also, if you're tweaking that requirement, look at how the affordable housing unit calculation affects sort of an effective minimum PRD size, right? As we saw recently with, you know, you jump down, you go from, you go from eight to four.
Yeah.
Right, because the economics don't work for the affordable.
Right, well, I think with the affordable, they were originally proposing, I think they could do seven, but yeah, then it went to four.
Right, and, and we just briefly mentioned, you know, having an alternative mechanism to fund affordable housing rather than contribute a, a unit or.
Right, okay. So, but I guess the idea here is that if you, if we decreased it to say, well, instead of having to be four times the lot size, the conforming lot size, it, it only needed to be three times the conforming lot size, would that increase the number of potential PRD sites? Would that also increase the potential for neighborhood conflict by putting, shoehorning lots of units onto a fairly small property? I think that this minimum size parcel kind of ensures a certain amount of isolation from the neighborhood as a whole, but that's, I think, still a question for folks.
I think we also talked very early on about the half mile part, and saying whether even expanding that to.
Oh, yeah, three quarters of a mile, yeah.
Up to a mile. What does that open up in terms of lot availability?
Yeah, and I haven't looked at that. I did look at the, the half mile, and that's why, you know, when I looked at half mile, I concluded that, like, resident C looked like a great proxy, and it simplified all of our bylaw language by not having overlays and everything.
Yeah.
But if we went to a larger area, we clearly would include a lot of residents, you know, a lot more residents B, and.
So that's a fairly simple.
Exercise to do.
You're just looking at lot size, that's a fairly simple process in GIS to do. I mean, it's, it's, might not mean that every one of those lots that gets identified could actually do it because of wetlands or floodplain, or, you know, may not have the required frontage or depending on its size or shape, but I can easily have maps created that show, all right, so here's the one acre lots in resident C, and here's, you know, the one acre lots half mile from, I'm going to say Monument Square, or, you know, the trains, you know, Throw Depot Train, Concord Center Train Station, or, you know, you just need to pick a point.
Yep.
And, you know, that's an easy exercise to do in GIS.
Yeah, I mean, you realize that going from half mile to a mile multiplies by four, the square area, you know, that would be covered in the town, so it's a quite a, quite a big increase of the impact.
I mean, it depends on what sits inside of that circle that's available.
Simple exercise to do in GIS.
Right.
You just need to give me those parameters, so I can start with resident C, and then do half mile, and then one mile.
Yes, I think those would be the three.
It's just.
That will give us kind of the extremes, and we can say a four mile is too much.
Yeah.
So it would just be, so from, from what points?
Oh.
So, you know, like.
Well, I think the two commuter stations.
So from the commuter rail stations?
Yeah, and then.
Town center.
The Mill Dam, yeah.
Okay, so the intersection of Main Street and Walden?
And Walden, yeah. Yep, I think those three spots.
And then that's only for acre lots, or do you want it?
We want to, probably want to see any three, three quarter of an acre and above, would, I mean, but the thing is, we need to distinguish them.
That's fine, that's.
Yeah, okay, I would say that, because, I mean, the, the question is, what would be the impact if we reduced this a little bit from an acre?
Yeah, find the mix of distance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, three quarter and.
I mean, the thing is, once you get into residence B, there are going to be a lot of three quarter acre lots.
30,000 and 40,000?
Yeah, you know, the thing is, in residence B, it would be double that, it would be, right, because the current bylaw says it has to be four times the size of the lot of the district. So in residence B, you know, it's half acre zoning, so it would need to be.
Eight.
Two acres, yeah, exactly. So, you know, it basically, when you're in residence B, it's an acre and a half that we'd be looking at, if that's not too complicated.
Instead of three quarters?
Yes, exactly, because we wouldn't want to make it three quarters of an acre in residence B to throw up a.
So you want thirty, forty, and sixty?
Yeah.
Okay.
But why not?
Well, I think the general presumption in residence B is it's a more suburban-style development, at least as a consequence of how it was originally developed.
But we're talking about trying to make it so that there is increased density closer to.
Towns, yeah, yeah.
If we're setting the lower bounds, saying three quarters of an acre, I, I think as a, as a starting point to look, just to see what numbers we're talking about, you know, number of lots.
Okay.
As a lower bound, I think that.
All right.
But, yeah, but I, I mean, I agree that there's, what's considered closer to town, and then as you start to get a mile, I, you know, I think we're getting more towards sprawl and less towards, you know, keeping everybody in walkable and things like that, even though we know you can certainly walk a mile to town, that doesn't seem to be what.
We're not all thorough.
So we're not talking about relying on the existing zoning district, we're talking about creating.
It would, in that case, it would be an overlay district, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, depending on what we found from.
I mean, because residence B is all over the place, it's, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my, my thought is, I mean, I, I, we sort of go back to some of the principles in the long-range plan, is that we're encouraging greater density near the village centers to preserve open space, but create housing options, and presumably allow people to live more of a village-centric, walking.
Right.
Lifestyle. So I would say rather than, you know, I, I think you can walk about three quarters of a mile in 15 minutes or so, and that, I think, is probably sort of the radius.
The limit.
Yeah, and what I would be, if we're interested in covering more areas, I might not just keep expanding the circle, because Alan and I were just doing a quick look at the GIS, and that looks like it would essentially cover the belt of Concord, you know, without nine acre corner and without the stuff up by Estabrook Woods, but everything in the middle would be in.
Yeah.
I would look at keeping the circle smaller, but finding more centers to the circles. So, you know, West Concord, the, the Throw Depot, the.
Mill Dam.
And Mill Dam.
Well, those three, I think we already had planned, yeah.
Okay.
But not, but you're not necessarily advocating.
I would still focus on that, essentially that walkable distance.
What you're saying is three quarters or less.
I would guess.
Because a mile makes it one big.
I think a mile is, is too far for this.
Radius or something, right? Or not?
Uh, yeah.
Radius.
It is.
Yeah, three quarters.
Okay.
All right, Nathan.
Well, I'm just looking for the range, so that's why I was.
Yeah.
You were originally going to look at a half mile and out to a mile and resident C, so that gives us a full range, and we can say, okay, at a mile, at a half mile, we're not capturing enough, at a mile, we're capturing X amount, does that seem reasonable? Or going down to three quarters of a mile, are we going to cut out a bunch? Like, I don't know, we can always add more, so I was trying to lessen the amount that Elizabeth might have to do.
And we're going with 30, 40, and 60,000 square feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Next, wow, we're only, that was point two. Point three, basic density, okay, so, basic density today is for resident C, and I'll just keep going back to resident C, because that's going to be probably most of what we're talking about, is four units per acre, right? And then we offer bonus density in the PRD for, you know, affordable housing up, to make it up to eight units per acre. But then if you look at smart growth, smart growth starts at eight units per acre for a single family, and goes to 12 for two to three family designs. So, question is, do we sort of adopt more of a smart growth standard here, something in between, you know, what are we, what are we going to do, are we, I mean, part of the idea here is to increase density, so what is the increased density? Is it 25% more than we used to have, 50% or 100% more? Yeah, it's a tough one, right?
Is there any consideration of like brownfield sites versus like sites that are maybe contaminated?
Not in the current bylaw, in the current bylaw, there's special considerations if a nonprofit is bringing forward this thing, or the select board, or, or housing committees, and, and then you can waive all of the open space requirements, and then there's, but, and there's also a special thing if it's a, if a school building, converting a school building, but those are the only two kinds, I mean, other than the limited industrial, the limited business district or industrial district, which is a totally separate section of the bylaw, so for the alternative PRD.
This one, this, the Village PRD, I mean, I know in previous meetings, we're talking about, the idea is increased density in the Village PRD, and then disincentivize or decrease density, PRDs in these, and so I, I, I keep struggling with assessing what these requirements would be without seeing what those offsets would be. But I, this seems to me more so than the two-family and the accessory dwelling to be really incentivizing new construction.
Yeah, well, PRDs are.
Right, right, but in terms of, instead of like retrofitting our existing housing stock to increase density within that existing footprint.
Right.
Or make it diverse within that existing footprint, this is really like new footprints of new homes.
That's right.
Okay.
But if we're going to do new homes, I think the goal is to try to do new homes that we would actually like, you know, to see built.
Right, but we're, we're saying that we're gonna, I mean, if we're.
Because homes do wear out eventually.
The threshold in the parcel size lower, we're potentially making new parcels, qualified new parcels for development that don't qualify now.
Right.
Okay.
So, and in fact, maybe I should just, I, I realized that I had promised to start the discussion with Alan's piece, maybe we should turn our attention to that, because I think you raised the question of like, well, okay, what do we want things to look like? I mean, you know, okay, if we're, if this is going to result in tear downs almost by necessity, because it's all built out, so any PRD is going to be where there already is something.
And have a larger footprint than there is now.
Yes, then, you know, what kind of community are we trying to create in those spaces? So I think Alan has been doing some work on that, and just showing kind of what other communities have done, and the kind of other patterns of development, so maybe I should turn over now, you could show some of the materials.
And this is up there.
Yeah, it's up there on the, yeah, so we probably reconfigure ourselves for a few minutes to, to take a look at it.
I just have a few slides, it's all very structured. Basically, I was collecting things on Pinterest, and then Matt told me to make a presentation, so I put it in PowerPoint.
These are quite a lot.
So.
Okay, right.
So I guess, I mean, I wanted to start with this, if we look at.
Could you go to like, presentation mode or something?
Go to bottom right, over here.
Or, yeah, view, or, or slideshow.
Click on the bottom right little icon.
Dooley down, there are three different ways to do it. That, that dot right down there, there you go. Why did it all go dark? Why did it all go dark? All right, never mind, this projector must have some...
It's never been connected to a Mac before.
That's a different pattern of development.
Yeah.
All right, hey, now we're in, okay, yeah.
So, um, if we look at A and C, I mean, uh, these are not typical, obviously, Concord buildings. But, uh, A is the most green, uh, and C is the least green, uh, in terms of, uh, everything from, uh, whatever we're talking about in terms of, in the long range plan, in terms of sustainability. And, uh, so, of course, we know that cities are greener than suburbs, and, uh, but we don't want to make a urban, uh, and urbanization of Concord, so we know that. But, I mean, there might be ways of thinking about it in, in this, um, way. And I was just collecting some, uh, building types. So these are mostly townhouses that we don't have in Concord, and these are highly sustainable. I mean, they're green, much more green than anything that's being built in, uh, they have much, uh, much more compact footprint in terms of, um, what, what they do to the, to the ground, in terms of pervious, pervious surface versus pervious surface. And, um, they're townhouses, basically. So that's, that's one typology that we might want to think about close to village centers. And these are from different parts of the world, and, um, and they could be in any architectural design or form that's, uh, worse. And of course, the, uh, the, the idea of variation in height is, is something that could be encouraged. And then, the idea of cluster housing, where things are much more clustered together, and, um, having, um, uh, the land, basically, uh, now it's, now, I think, uh, the bylaw is fifty percent of the land is being built, so if that's, becomes much more denser, where, uh, houses almost touch each other, but then the land, so this also works with the tree preservation bylaw, so...
If we could have that landscape in the bottom left to go with the housing, I think that would be very popular.
Give it a hundred years.
Yeah.
So, of course, they're, yeah, I mean, these are all the idea of cluster housing. They're much denser than any type of PRDs that we have here, but, uh, I mean, the green space is preserved, but, uh, I mean, of course, these are more condo type, uh, buildings.
Sure.
You know, what would be interesting is, to see what is around them, you know, like...
Right, uh, so, I mean, they're from different places.
Right.
I got, uh, so, I mean, this, they're in different parts of the world.
Right.
So, this one is in Germany, and this one is, uh, this is in Germany, and this is in, uh, England, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like if, and we don't, haven't gotten to this yet, but like, if we incentivized, you know, green, sustainable building and things like that, and, and energy use or something like that, then they, the form would have to follow that, don't you think?
But I think, I mean, one of the simplest way of doing it is increasing, uh, by the zoning tools that we have, is increasing the height limits, decreasing the footprint. I think, I think those are the things that, so saying, and then that, in terms of driveways and all the, um, pavement that, that goes, uh, for the cluster housing versus all these...
Okay.
Right now, how, these are done, it's just, like, basically, this, the biggest layout of, uh, roads, basically, that you can have, and then you distribute housing, that's, that's how it's done. So, there could be different ways to encourage the, uh, but I guess we would want to decide if these are the types of houses that we want in Concord and, or not.
So do you think if, if we wrote a bylaw that said certain, had certain parameters in it, it would kind of lead people to develop like this, to the exclusion of developing kind of the old way? Like, you don't think you could do both, right?
Well, I think that what we try to do is to incentivize, you know, make the bylaw so that it would just make economic sense to go the way, yeah, that's the idea.
But the height restriction would be one.
I mean, the height restriction, so, I think the biggest thing is to, uh, making the footprints smaller. I think that's, that would make the biggest thing.
The, the per unit.
Per unit, in terms of pavement and everything built.
Oh, I see, you mean the...
Having the green area.
The coverage ratio, yeah, a lot coverage.
Because that's what encourages cluster housing. So basically, houses are going to get closer to each other, and maybe the setbacks, we need to deal with the setbacks of, I mean, these are all attached together, so it's, it's more like a building, or like...
Yeah, could you go back one? I was just thinking, you know, looking at, yeah, looking at, for example, this, uh, in the bottom left, that if you just imagine the PRD that we have been reviewing, you know, on Main Street, that has a very, uh, you know, steep drop, and, you know, the, the alternative to kind of trying to flatten it
Yeah.
and to create a bunch of roads would be, okay, well, you create, you know, units that go down the hill terraced and that are very tight, tight, and, um, you, use the topology of the land to create views and, you know? So, it's an interesting possibility. I just, I guess there, it gets back to discussions with realtors and developers, you know, to say, well, this is not the Concord we know, this would be a, you know, this would be a different kind of thing, um, but...
Well, but you also have to think about, even with, like, the Main Street project, the, the difference in, um, the comments that the board received from one architect in the beginning to the second architect.
Yeah.
And it, you know, if it, if it doesn't look like, you know, historic New England, then it's not compatible with the neighborhood.
But if you had a, again, taking a ten acre parcel like that, you, you know, I don't know how many units we're looking at here, but let's just say, you know, thirty units, no one would even know that they were there. I mean, that, you know, they'd be only in the middle two acres of the, yeah, exactly, there, there'd be woods. They'd basically be able to still see the woods.
I'm, I'm looking at that plot, side map in the lower right hand corner.
Yeah.
And, and because really, the Main Street project, they were maximizing the number of units in there, and I was thinking, so what's the difference between that and this? And, and it looks like side yards and space for vehicles. Is, essentially, if you cut that out of the, of, of that most recent PRD we saw, pushed everything to get, cut out the side lots and the, and the, and the parking for two to three house, cars per unit, you know, a two car garage and a, and a two car driveway, you could get to about that.
But that's like triple, what, triple the density that they were proposing.
That, I mean, it...
Well, in that, yeah, in that size.
Yeah.
So it seems like we are trying to preserve more open space, which would then encourage or require people to be tighter together.
So, so, yeah, there are two ways, I think, it's either clustering them or increasing height, I mean, by, um...
Having, having units above each other.
Above each other, yeah, so, so...
With an elevator, you know?
Well, but so let's say, let's say we're in town, you know, how high can you go before you've got something just sticking straight up?
Well, so, we've got, I mean, Newbury Court, right, is, uh, six stories?
I think up to five or six stories.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, Concord, I don't know what's...
I mean, the hospital is, what, eight stories?
Seven.
Seven, okay. Yeah, so...
Eight, you're right, eight.
Yeah, that's the, that's the tallest structure we've got now, but that's a, you know...
In, in the village center.
In the village center, I mean, the thirty-five feet is...
So if you start going...
I mean, we do have some districts, you could have up to forty, but I'm not aware of any buildings that are. I mean, other than the churches.
Because I like the opportunity it offers, and I wonder if that's the...
Schools. Brookside Square is forty?
I think it's close to forty.
Forty feet.
Okay. So there you go. But I mean, even, I think, Brookside Square, I think there was a real compromise there, question of like, because the original proposal was one more story, and it would have had a smaller footprint.
Interesting.
And, um, you know...
Was that objected to by public comment?
There, there was, yeah, at the time. Now, again, I, I wonder if in retrospect, you know, now people look at it, if they would feel differently, I'm not sure.
So, I guess if you weigh pros and cons between going high versus flattening land...
Yeah.
I, I vote for going high, but that's, I guess that's a personal preference.
Well, again, I think on that Main Street parcel, if there was, in the middle of that, that ten acre thing, there was a, you know, six story building, it might be kind of cool, I don't know.
Yeah.
Something like this could...
I don't think that would...
You don't think that would be cool?
Well, but I agree, because people can see it from the street.
Right, but, I don't know, this goes back to me thinking of how we would get this through town meeting. I think
Yeah.
you would have a very hard time selling that.
But I think, I think that's part of the education that needs to take place is, you know, why, why would we want a smaller footprint? Well, this is what it means, and all the people that come in and say, I don't want this PRD near my house because of the groundwater table and all this stuff, we can, you know...
Right, but, you know, people looking down on my lot, you know?
Yeah, oh, I agree, I mean, that's, and that's what I'm picturing, like, you know, in town, too. You know, would we be talking about something significantly higher?
I think going more towards packing and...
You, you like packing rather than pushing up?
But, but like...
I think that's easier to sell.
That's higher, but that's...
Depending on the setback also going high.
Yeah.
That's it.
It's maybe a ratio?
Yeah, yeah, well, this is like form based code, right? That's, that's essentially what you would do.
Okay.
I think it's a large lot in the middle of your going high.
Right.
That's interesting, making the height based upon setback.
I can be very simple of how we want to deal with it, it's just about height, uh, packing, and, uh, clustering heights, and that's it, I think.
The, the sort of angle, the perceived angle from the edge of the property to the height.
The variables are not that, that many that, uh, that we have to deal with. Yeah, so these are pretty common, uh, and...
Yeah, see, I've been to places around the world that had these kinds of forms, it's just that I'm, you know, never seen it in Concord.
Well, and, but we're a very progressive community, and, you know, sustainability is important to a lot of people. I mean, there are places around Boston that look like this, right?
Yeah.
So, and people want Concord to look like those places, is that the consensus?
I think that there's not a consensus on that at all, no. I think that there are definitely different points of view.
Right.
Well, just coming back to the principles while we're considering, I think a lot of people are looking for housing that's appropriate for people that want to live in village centers and would otherwise be priced out of Concord, especially as they're aging in town, right? So, so it's about driving smaller, more affordable, make more available housing on that side. I think it was the first driving principle.
Is there a threshold for what it is to be affordable?
Yeah, oh, but I mean, there are calculations, and, and we're nowhere near affordable.
Right, so...
I mean, if you want to use a definition, I, I think we're...
The moderate affordable is a hundred fifty percent of the regional income, and, um, you know, that's still probably a little less than half of what the median sale price is in Concord today.
So can we, can we quantify that and say, we think this is affordable, and then look at some of these parcels and say, if we make these changes, we do think these types of developments will be built, and they'll be sold for this amount, versus just not knowing whether we're just incentivizing the kind of development that we already have a lot of in Concord, which is development? Well, see, and, and that's a good question. I would say, no, I think, I think people are going to sell it for whatever they can get it for.
Well, of course, but...
And then, so, but, I think what we are offering is smaller square footage, which by necess, in theory, should mean a lower price point. I don't think it's going to make it affordable. What, what, and, yeah, I know, I know that's not necessarily, it's not linear by any means, but, um, it, it would offer smaller homes, so you could attract a different type of, you know, family or single person or older couple, right? Because it's a smaller, it's not a giant house that needs to support a four person family. But, um, I, I mean, I think that that's the question. I, I have been looking at this as more diversity and attracting different types of people here. I'm not, I do not think it's going to be affordable. With a capital or a lower A.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat, I think...
I wish, I wish we could come up with options that would somehow lower the median price. Say it again? Is that a housing authority issue, if, I mean? Well, I mean, there's also, um, capital A affordable housing that is being worked on. That's, that's a little bit different, I think, than what we've been...
The goals here for our Housing Choice Initiative were create units that do, wouldn't need subsidies effectively, that would have a lower price point generally to deal with the diversity of housing needs. That, that's the goal, because, you know, you get above a hundred and fifty percent of median income, and now if you start subsidizing those units, people that pay property taxes that make less than that are subsidizing people making more, you know? So that's, you don't really want that situation.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, uh, we have, you know, we do have smaller houses that come on the market, and they get bought by developers and torn down.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and then we have people coming to us, say, well, we want smaller houses for less money, and it's like, but they're not, can they buy the ones that are there before they get torn down? Versus us chopping up lots that now have other houses on, and actually creating more houses? It's like a reaction to...
Well, it, it is the economics of our time, which is that, yes, that it ma, it makes the most economic sense with our zoning, that is a single family zoning, to maximize the size of the house on a given lot.
But I'm not saying people taking these off the market before the developers got them. Like, why aren't those people who are going to buy, who want these properties?
Developers have more money.
Developers will always outbid, will always outbid just the single family homeowner.
And if they're going to do a tear down, they're obviously not going to do any sort of, like, they'll just, here's cash. Yeah, it's important to remember, there's sort of a, a value system and a model of development that's baked into our zoning codes that was originated in the nineteen fifties. What, our goal here is to, I mean, there are other groups focused on the capital A affordable housing, subsidized housing, and, and what we're looking at is, can you change, make changes to the zoning code where the economic model makes it more attractive to create housing that is smaller, such that, you know, the, the developer's making the same amount of money, but they're selling to four families instead of one? And so you have people who, maybe you're selling their bigger house on the outskirts of town, but want to stay in town, and they're moving in to a smaller unit, and you're also having, because you've developed denser, smaller houses, you're reducing impact on the local and the larger community. So that, that's the whole thing, is, rather than, it is to say, wha, what can we do to tweak the code such that the, the econ, the economic incentive is that the developer makes more money by building that instead of the five thousand foot single family house? Because of the values that are expressed in the long range plan.
Okay.
Also, just upon the argument that, uh, this does not look like Concord, it always comes up, right? I mean, but what does Concord look like now? I think that's, that's something that we need to think about also, with all these big houses and...
Yeah, it's, it's changing, and it's sort of changing from under us regardless, right?
So we're going to teach you more, you're saying?
Well, we're going to try to guide the change in a different direction, is, I think, was the goal. You know? I mean, the default change is more large houses, without us doing something.
Well, and also, setting the affordability, not affordability side, uh, part aside, part of the drive is also to just maneuver people toward the centers, to use the town centers, use transportation...
To keep them vibrant.
All of that.
Yeah.
So, the affordability part, I agree, is a noble, but probably not a realistic goal in this, uh, not in a real sense.
Well, it's all relative, I think.
Yeah.
Well, um, so, I've got an idea here, I'm just a little concerned, because we have another major discussion topic ahead of us, which is our, our goals. Yes, so, um, what I'd like to do maybe at this point, especially since we got to see this, we had a kind of provocative discussion about this, the architectural design elements here, that the rest of it is kind of more rote, uh, zoning gobbledygook, if you will. Why don't we assign this as a homework assignment, to go back, take a look at this, come back with, I mean, most of this is questions. Come back with your ideas next time in each of these areas, and then let's have a, a discussion next time around, okay, you know, what, what do we want to try to propose here? Because I think it's probably asking too much tonight to try to, you know, I mean, I, I think last time we kind of hit that spot with the two family, where we tried to get Pla through it all, and by the end, everybody was like, ah, I don't even know if we want to do two families. And that's why I tried to do the summary chart, but the, this time, I'd rather kind of us stop while we've kind of gotten things on the table, I mean, not to cut anybody off, but that, to just try to now gather our thoughts relative to the bylaw.
And I may be able to have that GIS data for next time.
Okay.
And do you think it makes sense to, to look at the village PRD in tandem as a package with whatever changes?
as a package with whatever changes that we might consider for the outlying?
Yes, so what I'd like to do next time is, you know, every, every meeting, I've been trying to put one of these on the table.
It's so doing so.
No, just, just plow forward, you know, get, get them all on the table. So the, the next time, we would have maybe a similar kind of a sheet for the, the, what do you call it, the country PRD. Okay, so, uh, yeah, there's the village PRD and the country PRD. And, uh, so I'll, I'll try to put that together so that we can have an initial discussion next time of that. And that, yeah, maybe that would give a, a good sense of. Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
All right. I want to, once again, give an opportunity for the public to comment at this juncture before we get into the next topic. So anybody? Yes, sir.
Uh, Colin, so just on the defining the, the, you know, village area, the overlay area. Maybe instead of points with a three-quarter mile, it could be a length of road, you know, from Ken Dunn Square to the past store or something like that in Wisconsin. Sort of, you know, instead of picking a central point.
Makes the math a little harder, though.
When you put in GIAS.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay.
That would be the, the difference between creating, you know, just one overlay district compared to a different pattern of overlay district.
And I think this is just to get an initial sense of what we're looking at.
And then you can define it however you used to define it.
And then in terms of the density, density, which as we saw here, I notice a lot of the three-story looking units have parking underneath, which is great to, so you don't need the footprint of garage, but you're getting some more height. We talked about height relative to setback and if that could also be made relative to context, you know, what are, what's the slope from the neighboring highest roof up to the peak or something like that.
Okay, and there is a topic down here about garages and parking and stuff like that, so. Yes.
Steve?
Yep, go ahead.
19 Sunny Side Lane, I also like the idea of setting the height based on how far it is from the property line. And I'd also like to point out the effects of sunshine. So when you have, um, a house that is on the south side of the street and it's three stories high right at the edge of the street, it shades the whole street and even across it. But if it's on the north side of the street, then it's only shading its own property. And I think that makes a real difference to people who live in an area that would get shadowed. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be from the center of the property strictly. Um, it's something to think about.
I've never seen that zoning. It's an interesting concept.
It's a form-based code, but when you look at like, um, the step-back couple of that apartments, that's really nice because it doesn't shade the streets. And when you think about the three-story high five and 10, even though it's smack right on its sidewalk line, it's not intrusive because it's on the other side of the street and it's not casting shadows into the street. It really makes a huge difference in that picture of circumstance. I see a lot of these PRDs that seem to be laid out in sort of a central driveway with the houses off of it. And the, the central street feels like a driveway and it really does not feel like part of the community because you feel like you're not supposed to walk down that driveway as, unless, excuse me, unless you live with that community. So, um, part of that is our car-centric culture of you drive in the middle, you park in front of a house as opposed to the back of the house faces the, the car access. But if you really want to have these developments be integrated into village centers, I think we should at least think if there's a reasonable way to integrate them more fully and not have them feel like gated communities minus the gates. And, uh, as far as design guidelines, I think it would be really hard to have that fly. I mean, you've had some really ugly contemporaries go up in town lately, if you ask traditional New England me, but as single families, they fly. But maybe you could require either a pitch roof or a green roof or solar in order to try to clamp down on a little. And final point, in terms of density, I hope you'll leave room to allow for an energy density bonus so that you won't max it out just on the basics. There'll be room to say, if you have a lower energy footprint, then you can go up. And if you do something like that, it should be percentage-wise because the state is going to keep, I hope, advancing energy requirements. And I would hate to have a, a situation where we've had a minimum requirement of this and then the state goes beyond that and our requirements now means.
Okay, yeah, and, and that concept of a bonus for energy efficiency is on here.
I saw that, but I'd like it to be percentage-wise and that absolutely.
Yeah.
So that you don't have to pass something through town meetings to change.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay, I think we'll close that topic and we'll move on to goals. So, Elizabeth, can you tell us?
So there, there, um, there's definitely one goal that I completely forgot that needs to be on there and that's 59 Walden Street and the visualization.
Oh, right, which is.
Analysis that NEPC is doing, which we just executed or in the process of executing the contract. So once that's executed, they'll give it, give me the timeline on, on when they're going to start that.
Okay.
So that needs to be added.
Yeah, and that's already in flight, so.
Yeah, it's already in flight, so it needs to be added.
It's not a negotiable one like these others.
Number three. So I'll just add a paragraph or actually another, just another item under three.
Yep.
And then Matt, um, has some suggested residential stormwater bylaw, which I just think that it, these, they don't all have to be done. I know this is for this year, but I do think it's good to see, you know, here's the three-year vision so that we don't get to it one year.
Well, so that is kind of what.
Right, with the priorities.
That is kind of what is under number six when you look at the envisioned Concord plan and setting out some of these, you know.
So we more formally do that this time.
So six is actually going through the plan, going through the, you know, chapter five, which is the implementation. And, um, having a, a more focused discussion on prioritizing those items.
Yep.
And, and creating a more focused list than what is just chapter five in the long-range plan. So I think that's, that's how I envision task six is something that the board can do.
Not to get ahead to six already, but do you already have those tasks pulled out? I feel like you did, didn't you?
Um, so I highlighted them in, just in the chart.
Right.
Um, but I can, I can actually just individually pull those out and basically delete everything else, if that would be helpful.
Unless you think it's, um, helpful to see them in context of the other ones. I mean, we can still see them in context.
I think if you had your initial discussion, going through that and seeing them in the context of other things. And.
Okay.
And then pulling that, that might, but it's up to the board.
So I guess, you know, I would like to kind of highlight a couple of them that I think deserve priority. I mean, I think housing diversity priority, de facto, work you on that one, so. I think that the, the parking requirements one is actually not that hard for us to do. I mean, we have been using criteria for some time to encode this into the bylaw. At least for our purpose, wouldn't be that tough. But we might want to look a little closer at some of the things. I mean, there's this discussion about establishing maximum parking, you know? So we could look at parking.
I think it's definitely something you want to have a conversation with the Board of Appeals about.
Okay.
Um, at least the parking relief criteria section of it.
To see whether they're, so we have in the offing, a, a meeting with them, right? So we could make that one of the topics.
Yeah, so that's going to be the, the doodle poll.
Okay.
That will be sent, um, sent out.
To see whether everybody.
Find a morning.
Can, that everybody can meet, a morning.
Um, that was the last time you guys talked, was trying to see if there was, um.
Oh, wow.
A morning.
Oh, as opposed to an evening?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if that's not, if that doesn't work for everybody.
Yeah, I don't remember that, but I mean.
Your memory is much better than mine, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
But thank you.
Uh, number three, the West Concord Design Guidelines.
Is that not, is that not an option for everybody? Because.
Is that going to be your board meeting?
I could do a morning, but I'm worried that others might have trouble.
It would be the whole board.
It's a joint meeting.
Oh, wait, would this be in, in August or after Labor Day? By the time we get organized? Because that makes a difference.
Um, I, yeah, I'm not, I mean.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but.
It could be sooner, right?
I was, I was probably guessing sometime in August.
Yeah, it's just a matter of getting the quorum.
I guess, I mean, you could try morning and evening times in your doodle poll.
Yeah, I like the idea of offering both options. Okay. Um, so the West Concord Design Guidelines, tightening those up potentially and then looking at the uses in the West Concord Business Industrial Village District. My concern on that one is I haven't seen a lot of progress. And I just don't, I don't have confidence that the West Concord Advisory Committee is going to bring us anything.
Did this have to do with, um, kind of preserving, uh, space for artists and things like that?
Well, the fabrication district is another thing and that's the West Concord Junction. Uh, cultural district was looking at that. Again, I still haven't seen anything.
But that's not.
So I just, I feel like at this stage of the game, I would hope to, there would be something out there that would be being discussed, but I, I haven't seen it. So I, I wonder whether this is going to go. Now that said, I, I haven't, I mean, I know that Marcia's dialed in with some of this work, so I don't know.
Not involved in the West Concord.
Yeah, yeah. Marcia might. So a- as far as looking at them, you know, so I think one is obvious. Two, I would encourage. Three, I think is a question mark. Four, the transport stuff, I mean, it seems like pretty easy. The wireless communications district, my view there is that the main thing that's happening with 5G is the impact on the public way. So, you know, these smaller towers are being put into the public way. That's not in our jurisdiction. So really, it's up to the select board to deal with that aspect, which is the bigger aspect, I think, of the 5G changes. And that we should look to them to take the lead and then we could follow with the part that affects us, which is we, we have a wireless overlay district, we have criteria, but they're in some cases not fully compatible with the 5G technology. So basically, the distances that we require a tower to be away from the, you know, various things is further than the transmission capabilities of the, of the technology. So we might need to reduce the, the distances in the case of this type of technology. But I think that's a relatively minor thing. And like I said, I'd, I'd be looking to what the select board brings forward first. Any comments on that? So that's another one that I don't, I don't know if it's that high a priority for us.
And we would need an outside consultant.
Yeah, we don't have the expertise to do it anyway. And so you need a budget to, to do that too.
Okay.
So, uh, the next one, I think we already discussed six. We definitely want to prioritize long-range stuff.
Are you going to, after, are you going to go through each one of these? And because what happens is that this, um, this draft memo gets turned into.
To a final memo.
Your memo to the select board.
Yeah. Well, again, I've just been throwing these comments out there, please, you know, I'm not trying to dictate anything.
Just write Matt's name at the top. From Matt.
The, between seven and eight, uh, I think seven, you gave Elizabeth a pretty dire assessment of where we're at right now. I mean, it seems like when and if we get staff time, it's not really up to us, right?
Yeah.
Seems like we do need to come up to date when we can.
But that would be staff making the revisions and we, the board would hold the public hearing.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's, so we, we do have to kind of wait to hear.
Yeah. And then I, I do think site plan rules and regs are a big deal. And I, I think that is, um, ugly as it is.
What's some background on why the board has not adopted any site plan rules and regs?
I don't think we ever got a, I mean, it was way before my time.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. So it's been ongoing, like, what happens if you don't have them? What happens if we do have them? Like, what, what has the impact been?
So, the, I mean, developers, when they are submitting their site plans, they just go, I mean, they hope that they're putting in the right stuff.
Okay.
You know? And, and we get plans that don't necessarily.
And then we send them back to the drawing board.
And then, yeah, we, yeah.
Because it's.
Because it's not specified what we want. Yeah. And I mean, I got an appreciation for this. When we passed the tree preservation bylaw, then I got assigned to work with Brooke on the rules and regs for that.
Oh.
And.
That was pretty comprehensive.
Well, although, I mean, it's a small bylaw compared to a site plan, it's, it's, it's little. And I realized just how, it's sort of like with the US Constitution, you know, you could drive a truck through any one of the things, you know, you need interpretation. And, and that's both the beauty of it as well as the problem of it. Same thing with our bylaw, it's kind of.
Okay.
Wide open on purpose, you know? But then rules and regs are where we kind of tamp it down for what we currently need. So I, again, it's not sexy, but it's, it's worth doing. And I think that the board actually should be involved, uh, you know, it says medium here and I think that we should get people working on it.
And is there an intermediate step where you can provide guidance, criteria and things like that? That they, that we don't have now, but it's not as comprehensive as rules and regs?
But that's what, rules and regs are guidance.
Yeah, but the, the tree preservation bylaws were like really detailed and comprehensive.
That's what these rules and regs.
Right, so is there, is there a smaller step we could do that still provides some detail of guidance that they're not receiving right now, but isn't, um, it, it isn't a complete interpretation that, of, of everything?
Yeah, that would just be the level of friends you include.
Yeah, it would be fewer rules, not as comprehensive. But I mean, I think we already have quite a few, uh, sort of uncodified rules and regs. I mean, when people submit stuff now, we, we have a form, you fill stuff out, you have to do certain things. But, um, it's, it, we still haven't adopted rules and regs. So I think some of it will be just, uh, codifying what we're already doing. There's a ton of experience, so we've done a lot of site plan review over the years. So I think it's really, um, now trying to put it down in black and white.
But this would be, you, you know, you'd still have to take a stab at this to start them and then we would help edit?
Well, you would, you would start with by looking at what other communities have got together.
Yeah.
And then from there, you can say, okay, well, here's all the pieces and rules and regs that we want to address.
And then.
Um, you know, is, um, you know, they, the, um, walkability and, and safety and pedestrian, how you feel when you're safe, where the sidewalk is in relation to the street. It's having a five-foot grass strip between the sidewalk and the street.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, it's not a little, you know, two-foot, you know, thing that never ends up growing grass. It's having at least a five-foot grass strip. So is that something in, you know, in site plans in commercial districts that you want to, you know, require? Or, um, you know, we don't have currently any requirement for landscape islands for parking lots. You know, so if you have.
Right, I just saw an example.
If you have 10 parking spaces in a parking lot, you have to have at least one landscape island. Or, you know, if it's 20, you have to have three. I mean, it, they can be very detailed.
Right?
Yeah.
So it just, it's a matter of, you know, how far you want to go. But there's lots of examples out there.
Right, so for tree preservation, we started with Wellesley's.
Right.
And then we hacked it and then came up with other stuff. Yeah, so I think that, yeah, we should try to, nice example to start and work, work on it, yeah.
Uh, can we just go back to seven for a second?
Sure.
Um, so we were just talking about potentially adding a stormwater, looking at a stormwater bylaw.
A residential storm.
Under, so is MS four, why is this such a low part, is why is, is, um, if we were to comply with the existing requirements under MS four, would that be, in some sense, meeting the objectives of instituting newer different stormwater bylaws? In terms of improving stormwater equality and treatment?
And so it, MS four, you know, those requirements are fair based on, um, you know, if you're disrupting more than an acre of land, it kicks in. Um, it, you know, some of the, um, things you can do for compliance is implementing low-impact, um, drainage design for, you know, commercial and resident, and commercial or subdivisions. So, but the town does not have any requirement that you have to, you know, if you're gonna build a single-family dwelling and you have, you know, a seven-hundred-foot driveway, that you have to include, you know, a drainage swale along the edge of the driveway and treat your, you know, treat your runoff and, you know, how, you know, how you deal with sand and salt on a residential driveway. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of things to consider, but, um, MS four deals with, um, a lot of roadway, um, drainage and how the town handles the roadway drainage and how that, um, impacts adjacent, um, streams and.
So why is that a low priority? Sorry, what?
It's, it's not.
Well, it's just because there's no staff to do it.
There's no staff to do it.
If we had staff, we would do it, for sure.
The staff time would be reviewing the existing regulations and determining how they would need to be changed to comply with MS four.
The staff time, as far as implementing, you know, the stormwater requirements, um, is something that Engineering Division would need to do.
So it's a matter of implementation versus figuring out what needs to be changed?
No, it's, it's having the Engineering Division go through our subdivision regs and say what design standards need to be implemented, to, you know, to further, you know, our MS four plan, um, further in the engineering practice as far as low-impact drainage design. Um, you know, it's, it's an engineering aspect of our storm, of the subdivision rules and regs that I do not have the expertise to do.
Perhaps our board does.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, uh, so where does that leave us? So I think we're at, oh, and then the, well, the, the last one, what is, there's nothing to do until there's something to do.
Exactly.
But, perfect.
But if something happens, it'll be, it'll be an education piece.
Right, we're not gonna do anything this year, there's just no way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so the part that, um, I wrote that fell off, but we have used the words form-based code, you know, in the last few years. And, you know, I hear that our bylaws are very antiquated and we kind of keep piecemealing them. You know, how do you say, okay, in five years, we want to be here, whether it's form-based code, and these are the changes we make towards that? Or how do you even decide if we're, we're going to try to aim for a full-scale change of?
Right, well, here's what I would propose, which is, as we discussed tonight with the, with the Village PRD concept, that it looks like form-based code might be a great way to specify this Village PRD thing. Because that's the way we're gonna get a sense of, okay, what would be the right height, you know, it's all relative to the other dimensions and the formulas and, um, and the same thing with, once we, I think have dropped the Thoreau Depot area thing, but I was also expecting that would be a trial of form-based code. So I would expect to kind of implement it gradually.
So it's not, it's not, you don't overhaul things?
Well, it could then lead to a more major overhaul later, but I think we need to get our feet wet with using it in a context that's a more restrictive context. Typically, form-based code, by the way, is used for a one district within a town, let's say.
I'm, I'm not familiar with it very much, do you know much about form-based?
Or for greenfield development.
What's the, what's the way you can, what's the elevator pitch to describe form-based code for new, newer people?
For newer people, well, basically, it is a, um, it's a zoning practice that really focuses on the form of the buildings, the structures themselves, and their context, so the relative positions and scale of the buildings, um, and, and their features, okay? And less so on uses, interestingly enough. And, um, it also looks at adjacent areas, you know, so, and stepping down from a more dense area to a less, and so on. But it's typically pretty formulaic.
Okay.
You know, and you just basically say, in this district, then, you know, you've got this height, the built, this width, this setback percentage, the height change, and things like that. And, um, it, that defines kind of the block forms, if you will, of the structure. I don't know, Alan, if that's.
Well, it's good to know. Like, so Boston.
There are different districts, they have different form-based code.
I don't know that Boston has much.
I thought somebody near us was doing it.
Looks at all those, like.
But it's good to know that you could, we, we are still progressing in something that is, is not taking us away from that, in fact, is allowing us to sample that.
Right, but, um, the other thing to note is that, I mean, form-based code has rarely been used, um, you know, in kind of, uh, established residential districts. Okay, it's usually in commercial or, yeah, town center developments, or greenfield development of a, you know, master-planned community, right? Which we don't have that problem, um, so, uh.
Okay.
Okay? Um, there was a comment, I, I guess.
Before you get there.
Yeah.
Um, this is, this is not something that a volunteer board and one town planner can do.
No, and, well, this might be a great topic for hats, by the way.
Number nine, wait, what did you say? A form.
Going through and developing a, a form-based code.
For anything.
Any district, yeah. So that needs to be, I would say.
Lunch and learn. No, well, so, no, but it's sort of buried within these things.
So let me, let me finish my train of thoughts, I think when you look at developing your two-to-four-year list, that, uh, educating not only yourself, but the community on form-based code, um, getting the, the public buy-in, then developing something, um, it, it's a two, it's a two-year process. So if, if that, um, is on this list that, you know, in, you know, in one year, you want to have everybody educated, and then the next year, develop something to take it to town meeting, you know, that's on that two-to-four-year list. Um, it comes down to having a conversation with the select board, and it comes down to getting, you know, getting help.
Yeah.
And I think, like, starting with, um, the MAPC and what they're doing for the limited business to district, you know, that's kind of a s- a start of, of what all these changes can do visually, and then from there, you know, adapting that into possibly some ba- form-based code. For that particular example, we would definitely need to have a conversation with Town Council and possibly the Attorney General's Office on, um, cause that, technically now, the limited business districts would not be adopted, um, as per fifty-nine Walden, cause it's spot zoning, it's one district. But, so I don't know what the, the level of change that can happen, you know, before, you know, if it made it in as spot zoning, it can stay. You know, that's the legal question I don't have answered, but, so that's where, you know, having that, putting this on here, putting it on your, your list of, you know, in two years or, you know, starting, you know, next year, we want to start the education piece and, and moving it out is, is then having the conversation with, um, you know, either the select board, if it's something you want to do for, you know, next year, when, um, for next fiscal year, so July of next year, then it's something that we can, um, put into the, you know, budget talks start in a month for fiscal year twenty-one. So we can put, we can put that as a project, a specific project, and get funding.
But it, it is a little bit more subtle potentially than that, I mean, if you look at the West Conker Design Guidelines, they, they incorporate elements of form-based code. And I think the same thing with the PRD, it's a self-contained portion of the bylaw, so it's relatively easy to implement that methodology just for that one, without upsetting the rest of our bylaw. So, uh, that's what I meant about creating a little laboratory for us to experiment essentially with form-based code.
I think it would be more difficult with the PRD because, um, it's, you don't have specific sites, um, for people to imagine. It's easier for some of the commercial districts, cause people.
Right, cause then you can say here.
Starts here, then it's here, and now I can imagine that.
Sure, like Thoreau Depot would be a really excellent laboratory for this. That's, that's where I'd originally thought that we would be able to, to trial it.
Which I, we haven't been told no yet.
Right. It would still probably be next fiscal year, one way or the other. And then the other thing is hats, so they're a great example of, we should bounce that question off of them, because they may be thinking the same thing. And if we pool our resources, the beauty of form-based code is it's kind of parameterized, you can just say, okay, well, you know, for Bedford, it's forty feet, but for Concord, it's thirty-five, but, you know, we've got this zone and, you know, these basic ideas still pertain, it's a business zone, you know? And so you can kind of share the, the wealth and, and the, the burden of the creation of the code.
What's the best way to do that? I mean, can you form like a working group where you're getting different towns?
I don't know the level.
Different towns together and.
I don't know the level of cooperation we can get, you know? I mean, there's great cooperation on affordable housing, for example, there's the Regional Housing Office, and that, that's grown over the years to now it's, it's very much regionalized.
It sounds like they're working on very similar issues that we are.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Accessory dwelling.
But I have a feeling it's a gradual process, it's not gonna be a, we'll hit the switch and, yeah.
Yeah.
So I can pose that to, um, our subregional coordinator for MAPC, for Magic, and, and, um, get a list of communities in, at least in Magic that are looking to do it.
Yeah, well, Littleton is doing it.
Yeah.
They're using form-based code for redevelopment of their center.
So, uh, our regional planning agency is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, it's a hundred and one cities and towns.
And Magic is.
Around Boston, Magic is one of the subregions.
Absolutely.
Minuteman, um, Minuteman area group on inter-local coordination. So it includes, um, you know, Concord, Carlisle, Acton, Littleton, and Foxborough, and Stowe, Bolton, there's eleven of those. But I can pose that question to them.
Okay, so I, we get back to here prioritizing this to create the final memo, what do we want to have on her memo?
So, is number, number one okay?
Yes.
Number one's okay.
Number two, I'm gonna, um, move forward, um, as this is, um, you know, with potential twenty-twenty annual town meeting, um, warrant article.
Right.
Three.
Acts.
Well, I would just put it on probation. And I think we should have our, our West Conker Advisory Committee member inform the West Conker Advisory Committee that they're on probation.
Um, but I am gonna add a second one for fifty-nine Walden.
Okay, yes.
And then four stays as is. Five, add the statement regarding, um, the board noted that the changes in the industry to 5G is primarily impacting areas within road right-of-ways, um, which is under the purview of the select board.
Yep.
And then you want to, yes.
I think that we should make a topic of our meeting, well, we, this is another thing, we need to know if on July twenty-ninth, we're gonna have a joint meeting or just send representatives to the select board, and I think that the, the topic was meant to be the housing choice initiatives that we're pursuing, but I think that perhaps we should also raise this other topic of common interest, which is the wireless.
I feel like that's gonna.
Blow up the meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, maybe we should just do the housing choice discussion that time and maybe have a separate emissary go for wireless later, okay?
Okay, so in here, do you want to say, you know, the planning board?
We'll need, we'll need to consult with the select board, I think you already say that, right?
Do you want to set a timeline for the emissary, the wireless emissary, like Q four?
Probably should be August.
August.
Yeah, probably should be.
So the July twenty-ninth discussion with the select board, I don't think there was any consensus on whether, you know.
Yeah, so the question is, though, so we've been invited to go to the select board, if more than, you know, three of us go, we're a quorum, so we would need to declare a joint meeting.
I, I cannot make it.
Okay, and.
More than fifty percent chance I can't.
Okay, so then. You know, and, and I don't think it has to be a joint meeting in that we're not gonna deliberate really on anything. We're, we're really just presenting our draft, uh, assumptions here. You're available. I'd love, you know, I'd like to go, I'd love to have some companionship here.
I can probably go, and I cannot talk if you prefer.
And if we're not gonna have a joint meeting, it should only be through three of us, but.
Understood, and I don't.
But if it's four, we can declare a joint meeting and just go.
I was volunteering to go if you didn't want to, if no one else was gonna go with you.
Okay.
Can we email amongst the four of us that potentially can go, or is that not allowed?
Well, you can, we can, you can, you can, you can email all of you together and say, yes, I'm available, no, I'm not available.
Okay.
I'll go if you can't go, that's not a violation of open meeting.
Right, but that's the extent of it.
You can work on scheduling by email.
Not like, oh, and I'll represent this point of view.
Okay. Great, like, can we just do that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay, uh, that takes us to number six, yes, of course, we're doing six. Seven, it's a question. Eight, yes, we're gonna do eight. And nine is a question.
So, wait, we're doing?
No.
Site plan rules and regs?
I thought we said that was too big to.
Too big to take on?
Well, to, to research, I mean, that's.
Research is not. I just think we could do some starter.
I just feel like every time we do this, we're like, yeah, Elizabeth can do this, and this, and this.
Well, yeah, but I think at this stage, what we've got, one, two, number four, a little bit on five. Six, okay, all right, and then eight, yeah. All right, that's, that's, I mean, that's six things, that's plenty. Well, I think last year's memo, no, I mean, as, as far as goals for the board.
For how many years now?
For, for one year, this next year, research, we'll, we'll, make number eight be research.
We recommend the board select one hires a consultant to, um, to, to.
To do number seven?
Yeah.
Well, I thought that we were gonna do it on an available basis, if we can, or you mean hire a consultant as opposed to wait for an engineer?
Again, you can, you can, you can include, um, you know, you can put a budget item request in the budget, and.
But that's not until next summer.
And, but the other thing is.
So it's the fall year.
We're gonna get an engineer anyway, at some point.
One's coming in January.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
They need to hire two engineers now.
When's the last time we had a subdivision also? How long ago?
Uh, last year.
Okay.
Well, it hasn't gone through, well, it, it.
I'm just thinking about like what the rate is, and, you know, kind of like a risk assessment.
We have only had one in a few years, but we had Monster Road was the previous one to that.
Hasn't been one since I've put on here, so that was.
Well, there was Main Street, there was, uh, Cuckoo Road. Cuckoo Road subdivision. Yeah.
That was two years ago.
Okay, well, but, okay.
So it's basically every three, four years, we seem to get a subdivision. So it's basically every three, four years, we seem to get a subdivision.
Thanks. Thanks.
Okay, so we're gonna change the, the implementing priority for research of site plan. Medium, five?
It's, I would say research would be medium. So, but then, yeah.
You can't make everything.
No, no, but then I was gonna make, what was, it was three being lowered?
Well, three is basically being changed. I would imagine
And I would say five is lowered to medium.
And then maybe West Concord.
Okay, five is low to medium?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay? I think we need to open for public comment at this point. Are we, are we done now with this topic? Okay, and I think we're, we're essentially done with our agenda now and we can open to public comment, general public comment, right? Yeah, go.
So, Dr. Nathan, if you are looking for district towing on form-based code, I have a pretty simple suggestion. This is something that came up years ago when the Fund Board and the West Concord Task Force were working on changing the zoning for West Concord. Problem with regular zoning is it has to be uniform throughout the district, whereas with form-based code, it has to be uniform by form, but not by the individual property. So since it was all or nothing, the zoning for the West Concord Village was set that you cannot have any ground floor residential housing at all, period, in the village district. And yet, there's no harm in having on the back of properties. It doesn't damage the walkability or the commercial viability of the district to have something at the back of the property. So you could write a form that says, the first N feet of a property on a major road must be commercial of some form, whereas if it's not on a major road, then it could be residential. So you could have an apartment at the back of some property. You would have to make it be deep enough to make it commercially non-viable to leave empty dead space at the front of a property in order to have mostly housing at the back. But it could help affordable housing just a little bit by making possible the back of some properties. So just a suggestion.
Good, thanks, yes.
Carla Reed, ABC News, and I think it may help explain the contents of those accessory dwelling units in two families to the layperson if you could also give some data about how many there are right now in Concord and how much growth you see, you foresee would occur with the proposed changes.
Yeah, well, that, that's pretty crystal ball. Yeah, but the first of those is a knowable thing, so
Do you know those numbers?
I don't have those numbers on top. We, I, I had an earlier spreadsheet that I put together, it was kind of unwieldy, but it included all those kinds of questions. And yeah, we haven't really pursued it yet. Yeah, but it is worth knowing. Any other comments from the public? Okay, then I suggest we adjourn the meeting. Thanks.